Before I read the script.
Will do, Chair.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good night, Chair.
Brilliant, thanks, Rachel. Okay, so, good evening, I'm councillor Chris Payne, Chair of this committee, I would like to inform everyone present that this meeting will be broadcast live to the internet by the council's website and will be capable of repeated viewing. The images and sound recording may be used for training purposes within the council. In order to ensure that the meeting is managed effectively, can everybody please keep to the following guidelines for speaking? Councillors should only use the raise your hand function to request to speak, only speak when invited to do so by the Chair. Please switch off your camera and microphone when not speaking and remember to set your mobile phone to silent for the duration of the meeting. Any views expressed by any speaker in this meeting are the speaker's own and they do not necessarily reflect the views of the council. Please can councillors be aware that the webcast will be continued to be livestreamed 20 seconds after the close of the meeting, this is due to a time delay in transmitting live. I will now confirm the names of the other members of this committee, councillor Bell, councillor Clark, councillor Collins, councillor Cross, councillor Ruby, councillor Armacun, councillor Quinn, councillor Ready, councillor Sybil, councillor Seisland and councillor Joe Taylor. And do we have any apologies for absence for this meeting?
I'm substituting for Linda.
Nigel, you're substituting for Linda, okay, thank you for that. Okay, anymore? No? Okay, great. Thanks for that. If anybody can hear any howling wind, it's because I'm on the arse of silly at the moment, so it's a bit windy outside, so I apologise for that. Can we receive any disclosures of interest? Any disclosures of pecuniary interest or other interests? No? Okay. And do we have any matters referred to the committee under the call-in procedure? I don't think we do, do we, Rachel? Okay, thank you. And now to the next item on the agenda is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Before I do that, has anybody got any questions from the minutes of the previous meeting? Okay, could I have a proposal for the minutes of the previous meeting? Thanks councillor Park and thanks councillor Sybil. Okay, so we're now going to move on to the Select Committee work programme. I did discuss this with the executive members and the officers the last time we met to discuss the programme of the meetings. My personal view was that the work that we're doing on assets is probably the most important piece of work and just continually adding more things probably takes our distraction away from some of that. But I guess my first question is, is there anything anybody would like to be on the November the 4th meeting? That's not there at the moment? No? Okay. I'm also aware, and I don't know, Andrew, if you can just say something to this, oh, there's Andrew on, yeah, thank you, hang on. I had an, or maybe Anthony, Anthony, I had an email in my inbox about a meeting on the 12th of November, which is a joint Economy and Growth and Corporate Select meeting, I think it's to review the pre-development report for the regeneration portfolio.
It is, Chair, it's a joint meeting for the revitalising Buxton project. There's an individual exec decision which is sort of setting out the process, which is scheduled to go for discussion and confirmation to the meeting of Economy and Growth next week. So we're hoping to get that out in the next day or so. And that'll sort of set out the process, but then the intention is for a joint meeting of your committee and Economy and Growth, which will then be followed the following week by an exec meeting to sort of move us on that next stage.
Yeah, and I think we, I think we did discuss that before. And my only intent here, Anthony, was just to make sure it was signaled to people and they're just keeping that free in their diaries.
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you. So has anybody got any questions or any observations about the Select Committee work programme? Okay, in which case we'll move on. And the next item on the agenda is the first quarter finance procurement and performance report, that's pages 13 to 54. One of the recommendations here is to note the report, so we've got that before we carry on. And I think it's over to you, Alan.
Yes, thank you, Chair. And of course, the second recommendation will be to do the write-offs on Appendix D, which will appear in part two of this meeting, because of course, there are financial information that we don't necessarily want out other than members of this committee. Okay, right, quarter one report. This is obviously a snapshot in time, and as it says many times in the report, the numbers will crystallise as we go through the year, but a good start. Just looking at the headlines to do with MPa and Section 3.3 of the opening report. The performance against budget, the first quarter, the general fund is almost £102,000, potentially underspent. And I don't forget, these are figures that are likely to happen towards, at the end of the year. So if we carry on the way we're going, then that's, that's how it is. It's not, we haven't overspent or underspent by that. So the efficiency programme, we'll be talking about that later. And the progress is reported against the income and charges stream at the moment, and we've got an item further on in the agenda on the efficiency programme. Housing revenue account, that'll be basically is predicted to be in surplus, almost half a million by the end of a quarter one stage, but again, these will crystallise later on in the year. But both capital programmes are expected to be on target, to be spent on target. That's the general fund and the housing revenue account. In terms of revenue collection, we're on target for that, for the council tax, and we're exceeding business rates by a couple of per cent. And our 60-day invoices, older than 60 days, i.e. we want to try and pay them before that. So we've currently got £96,603 as against £191,000. So we're obviously improving. That's from June 23. So we're doing quite well on that. If I, if I now look at some detail within what I've just sort of said there, if we look at point 2.3 of the main report, we've got the first quarter projected downturn, but the general fund is likely to be overspent against budget by £406,000. And yet I've just said that it's going to be underspent, but I'll come to all that in a minute. It is anticipated that we will be using AMAT reserves. The AMAT reserves, just to remind people, these are reserves that have been put down for specific jobs, specific tasks. And we'll be using, potentially using those reserves throughout the year. So that reduces that down to £126,000, but we've also had some external funding, which I'll come on in about three or four steps. There are three services, service areas, service areas, put my teeth in, that are underspent by greater than £50,000. Elections, as you can see, there is almost £81,000 underspent, but that is due to underspend of printing and staff, but £60,000 government grant received, which obviously if we don't spend that, then that will go into a particular, you know, the reserves for elections, because obviously we only pay out, we only have an election for the borough every four years, so when there's no elections, we build up the money and we put that in to reserves so that when the election comes, we've, we've got the money there already. Corporate finance is potentially £442,000 underspent. Water income's up by 100k, which is good. And the early estimates show that the allocation of the council's inflation budgets will be £350,000 less. So that's okay. So waste collection is 100, almost 124,000, and that's down to emerging information from the recycling indicates that there will be an increase to the anticipated recycling income. Therefore, a rebate of £139,000 is expected from AES. So again, we'll follow that throughout the year. There are two service areas with significant potential overspends. ICT, but we've mentioned this before, because as you know, there's lots of different bits of software, quite a lot of software actually, not just bits, that we're purchasing and setting up, and we've got some consultants in to help us to do that. And a lot of this is done, is covered, as it says in, in 2.5, by an AMAT reserve that we have. So that will reduce the spend down to 14,000, just over 14,000. Development Services, £276,000 potentially overspent. That's due to £100,000 projected overspend on planning appeals. For those of us on planning, we are aware of quite a few of the planning appeals and costs associated with those. But that's a bit more detailed there. And obviously, we've got some shortfall of income because there's not, you know, there's not as many planning applications as, as we would be hoping. Going back to why, as I said, we're talking about why at one breath I say that we're £110,000 underspent and £400,000 overspent. The external funding, the business rates, we've got some reduction of, in, of external funding, but we've, we've had a windfall after the medium-term financial plan was, was put up, you know, put together. We, the central government actually gave us some extra money. So another £106,000 from central government grant, and so that's good. Another movement in reserves are going to be 200, about 278,000. So in terms of that, we, these AMAT reserves that we build up, because we know we're going into projects, are doing as, you know, good now, when we want, when we need to, when we actually need to spend it. And the longstanding AMAT, again, longstanding AMAT reserve was increased from £200,000 to £500,000 for the efficiency programme. So again, we are, we, we started off with 200, we've put an extra £300,000 in. So again, we're looking to help, that's to help us make the effectively almost a million pounds efficiency saving over the next few years. We look at AES. We've got potentially £103,000 better off thus far. There's, there's some coming against that, because obviously the pay award was slightly bigger than we budgeted for, so there's £54,000 that we anticipate during, for the pay award, because obviously, as, as the AES employees, there are employees effectively go up, then we've got to pay, end up paying for them. Fuel costs are anticipated to be lower, as you know, the, your price of diesel and petrol has, has gone down since its hiatus. Further inflation, inflation pressures, £39,000 is in, is anticipated on vehicle parts, but again, we have, you know, the, we've got a, a reserve for, against inflation costs as well. So a rebate of £139,000, as I said earlier, is, is anticipated from AES. Alliance North, they're doing well in terms of cleaning and caretaking and general fund repairs. The housing revenue account repairs at the moment, they're very, very good at doing repairs. They seem to like to spend, spend money at a, a good rate, but seriously though, some of that is inflation. People know that you go to the, for a piece of wood and whatever. I know prices are fluctuating and and quite rightly, Chris was saying sometime that recently that the price of wood was going down. I haven't seen that, but there you go. The springs continues to be good in terms of a nice little money earner for us, the income. And, and as we've said before, this money is set aside to be spent within the project of the revitalising Buxton. So these, this, this money here, this £57,000, then another surplus of income after death, which is 80, 81,000. That money will be going into the, the reserve that we've built up and continue to build up. That, I think, section nine, which I want to spend a little bit of time on. And this is the Treasury Management, but I'm very, very pleased to see that Emily's with us on the call, so if I say anything wrong, Emily, please jump in. But I'm reading the script anyway. The council has been budgeted to receive just £1.1 million on investment income. But as you can see from this, there's going to be a shortfall of about £150,000 is forecast against budget as the average portfolio size is smaller than anticipated, but I'll let Emily explain all of that. There's other things to do with borrowing, which again is part and parcel of the Treasury Management system. Movements of local authority loans have taken place. A £5 million short-term loan at 4.4% was repaid in April, replaced by a nine-month loan at 5.35, obviously that's more. And a new loan of £3 million, again at 5.35. And a new loan of £2 million at 5.3. I mean, the general fund is forecast to be about £416,000 overspent due to larger capital borrowing requirements, the impact of which is £74,000 more on the minimum review provision. And a larger credit to the HRA for £253,000, £253,000 for an increase in the investment income apportioned to the HRA. But we've got a situation where we internally borrow, so some of the, I'll let Emily explain it, but fundamentally, I, I've said, I asked and had a discussion with Martin, saying that the, the, some of the interest is, some of the interest income is less because we're using our monies to invest, you know, to, rather than to borrow capital. Now that comes at a cost, we lose interest, but it also saves us money in terms of the interest that we would have had to pay had we borrowed the money externally. So I, I think in future I want to look at finding a way of reconciling that. And I don't think that's an easy thing to do. But I'll let Emily jump in if she wants to, or Martin, if I've said something that they disagree with. I don't seem to be coming to my aim.
Yes, I'm, I'm here, Alan Cantor. Yes, everything that you've just said is quite right. We do, we use our reserves temporarily to the best effect that we can. And for a number of years now, it's served us very well to use our reserves temporarily to fund the borrowing requirement instead of externally borrowing, because externally borrowing is usually more expensive than the investment income that we lose by not having that cash to invest in our investment portfolio. So that's where this year, for the first time, we are seeing that we have a shortfall on the investment income, because over the last few years, when we've put our budgets together, we expected interest rates to be going up, but not at the speed they did. So we kept seeing this surplus investment income all of the time, and that investment income is still high. You know, we're still in a high interest rate environment. But we expected it to be high this year, because we already had those base rate increases last year. However, that means we haven't got that windfall to offset the borrowing cost, which is also high. So we are seeking to mitigate those external borrowing costs by using internal borrowing where we can. It's not as easy as it was in previous years, but we, we always keep an eye on where we think interest rates are going to go. And when we do have the opportunity to lock in external borrowing at a more favourable rate than is currently available, then we will do that. So the, the net investments income and borrowing costs is a roller cost is under more pressure than it has been in the past. Martin? Well, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thanks, Emily. Martin?
Thank you. I've, I've nothing more to say on the Treasury Management, other than I did feel like I could ask everybody that joined the training that we did, what Sly stood for, but I think that might be a bit cruel and testing people on that. And I just wanted to draw people's attention to the housing revenue account. I know councillor Barrow said we would be in surplus on the housing revenue account. I just think it's important to draw out that that's a surplus against budget. The budget is actually a deficit budget this year. I just wanted to make sure people understood that we were planning, excuse me. Yeah, no problem, that we were budgeting to have a deficit on the housing revenue account, but that we're hopeful at this point, and as councillor Barrow said, it's early in the year anyways, a lot of way to go as we get to the end of the year. But we, we do expect to see a deficit in the housing revenue account. So that's all I wanted to add. Thank you.
And that, that is budgeted, yeah, that's true.
Thanks, Martin.
Do you want to pause there and see if anybody's got any questions? And then we can take the other sections.
Yes, so, so over to the floor. Has anybody got any questions they'd like to ask Alan or Martin or Emily? I've got one, it's a bit of a daft one. I'm making an assumption.
Question, Chris.
I'm making an assumption that the water that you mentioned was income from Buxton Water?
Yes.
And I'm guessing they're just selling more bottles of water, yeah?
I don't, I, I don't know the full details of the, of the budget, but Martin's putting his thumb up, so I assume that you're at, your assumption is correct. I would, I would have assumed the same as well.
Brilliant. Well, why should I ask that daft lad a question? I've got a couple more people. So Joanna, do you want to ask a question? Joanna, you had your hand up?
Yep. In the first table on page 18, I just wondered why under regeneration, you seem to borrow more than you need? I couldn't quite understand that bit.
Page 18?
Yeah.
That's, that, that's that table, yeah?
So you're using £40,000 of AMAT reserves, but actually it seems to me you only need £9,500.
Yeah, so what we've done is we've allocated those reserves to regeneration to make sure that that we can cover off the outturn that is already looking slightly above. As a percentage, it's a very small percentage, but clearly if, if we don't use it for that purpose, we'll retain it and roll it forward as a reserve.
Okay, it just seemed funny, that's all.
Yeah, no worries. It's accountants, we're, we're very careful to make sure we've got enough coverage where we need it.
I know, sometimes it doesn't quite make sense to me.
I did say it was a snapshot.
And also on the springs, on pa, sorry, if I can go on?
Yes, yes.
On page 3. It says, there's a potential need for a measure of performance in the collection of service charges. Well, I would have thought that even if the service charges are not very high, we'd want to know that the management were collecting them.
Yeah, that's simply a function that we set up a handful of key performance indicators across a range of what, of the things that really mattered to the overall performance of the project. And that when we first set it out in terms of whether or not it was a prudent thing to do, and that we set those as the indicators that would effectively measure that. However, having owned it, if you like, for a period now, we're just looking at what else we might want to measure, things that we, we want to look at. We're looking a bit more closely, for example, at voids, tenants and turnover and things like that. So that's really, to be fair, councillor Collins, a function of just getting more knowledge and working more closely with it and making sure it does everything that we need it to do while we're holding it.
Yes, thank you. And I noticed the voids have increased, and I also noticed when I was there the other day that they're increasing even more.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's tough times in the retail market and running shopping centres, but equally, we have got a few deals lined up, a few deals done as well to retain some of the, some of the tenants that we've got there, and we're always working with our agents to attract more. And so I'm, I'm pretty happy with the way that the springs is going from a financial perspective currently. And we, if you may recall, that when we, it's been a while now, hasn't it, but when we put forward the proposal that we would buy the centre, that we had a much lower utilisation rate, an occupancy rate than the one that we've got now, even with the slightly higher voids. But nevertheless, we run in it as a commercial enterprise, we're continuing to make sure that everything that can be done to attract and retain the tenants is, is being done. And so we, we keep an eye on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, councillor Seisland.
Thanks. I've got several questions and points, so I hope that's okay.
That's okay.
I noticed that we're only using 30% of local suppliers. And are any of those in the High Peak? Because it, because it mentions the SK postcode, but a lot of that is obviously down Stockport, Manchester. So I'm a bit concerned about that and would like, if possible, to use more local suppliers.
It's our aim to use more local suppliers, but I think, Cath, I think you've gone into a different, we're only doing the first section with the finance at the moment, I think.
We've not answered that yet.
I like your ambition, councillor Seisland.
Sorry, Cath.
Sorry.
Procurement's next.
I haven't got the, the other sheet with me and I can't manage two screens. Okay, shall I bring them up next? I'll bring them up when it's appropriate.
I'm happy to answer that now if you want, but I'll be happy to wait.
Do it now, yeah.
Okay then.
So, yes, certainly the, the ambition is to procure from more local suppliers. And, and 30% is not bad, actually, for all of the sorts of things that we buy, as to whether or not we have suppliers in the High Peak who can provide what we need. Procurement team are careful to ensure that the postcodes that are used to assess the locality are based on, on those that are in the High Peak Borough Council boundary. And, and there's, there's a lot of work going on to try to promote what we do to potential other suppliers in the High Peak to attract even more. But there's a lot of things that we buy that just simply don't have the, the supply chain or the, or the, the offer that's within the High Peak, even where we might want to, to purchase it. So we are doing what we can with that. The procurement team are always on the lookout for that, and we promote all of the procurement opportunities where we can on the website as well, and anybody who's interested in seeing what opportunities there are for contracts with High Peak Borough Council can find them on our website, that's updated regularly as well, so hopefully that answers that question.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I guess, I guess, Martin, it's fair to say that everything that's going to get purchased on the ICT project is probably going to be outside of the High Peak.
Almost certainly, but to be honest, yeah, yeah. I think, yeah. There are some IT suppliers within, within, but I don't think they're into our sort of, it was more machinery and, and stuff like that.
I think Tanya's on who'd be able to answer that a bit better than I would. She knows the, the sort of suppliers. I think Tanya's on who'd be able to answer that a bit better than I was. She knows the, the sort of suppliers we're talking about.
I guess the point I was trying to make, Martin, and supporting councillor Seisland to buy things local is every now and again, you're gonna have a big purchase of something like ICT that's gonna bend the stats.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Well, there's Tanya now, so it's.
Yeah, thank you. I think just to clarify, a lot of our big ICT procurements are with national companies, so there's no, you know, there isn't a local supplier that supplies a council tax and revenue system or a planning system, so, and there are significant spends, so, so yes, you, you're quite right councillor Payne, it's, that does sort of sway to, to non-local suppliers, unfortunately.
It's a shame, but, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, councillor Quinn?
Yeah, very, very briefly, I'm just sort of thinking in terms of the Springs, are, are reserves there? Will they cover any potential increase in voids, empty spaces as a result of work or development there? Is that, is that-
Exactly, yeah, that's, we, we've been, I hasten to use the words that are the phrase, siphon these away, but we, we've been very, very careful to earmark them as an earmark reserve that will be used somehow within the project. And that'll, that'll be down to the project team, how they are. It, it, it will be reserved specifically for something to do with the development of the Springs.
Okay, and can I just ask further to that? I, I know that we do say frequently, we didn't buy the Springs because we wanted to own a shopping centre or run a shopping centre. However, it, it does seem that it is a good investment regardless, so will that inform future decisions on ownership and, yeah, okay, because that would be sensible, wouldn't it? Yes, yes, okay, thank you.
No comment.
If I might just embellish that answer a little bit, it was a perfectly good response to that. What I would say is that the, the financial performance and the earmarked performance of the Springs, which is separate from our general fund and kept
Yeah.
identified for the purposes of the revitalising Buxton project. The finance and commercial assessment of any procurement will be looked at in the light of the availability of reserves that we've got in the Springs account, as it were. And also the future forecast and the performance of the Springs, so all of that comes into that consideration. As you can imagine, it's a pretty hefty old jigsaw to put together, but that is certainly, those are certainly several of the pieces, let's say it that way.
It's on your spreadsheet, Martin.
There's always a spreadsheet, you know me well.
Okay, any other questions on the first quarter finance? Okay, shall we move on to the procurement element of it then? Who's presenting on procurement?
Well, um, it's just, there's, there's basically appendix A is the first quarter activity for High Peak Borough Council. And then the second part is the joint between us and Staffordshire Malins because as you can see, software, the, the, the joint ones are procurement, delivery partners, software and various consultants and, and energy things, so where we can, we do things jointly and again, we've got, we're benefiting from you know, scale, if you like, for the two councils. But anything particular to High Peak, then that's in the beginning part of a pen of annex A. And as you can see, there is it, one, two, three, four, five, six to do with planning appeals, planning developments. Exactly what I was saying about within the, the, you know, the planning team in terms of, you know, why that's if you like, potentially overspend.
Okay, so there's a question from councillor Todd.
Sorry, I'm not sure if I'm out of the time here. I thought you would, you hadn't covered the housing revenue account yet.
Yeah, Martin, Martin, Martin did as well.
Okay, oh, sorry. Well, it's just that I've got a question about the decarbonisation, that devolution fund, five hundred and eighty-three thousand. And I thought that was income and it, it looks as though it's an expense on this.
Which page, sorry, which page?
Page twenty-nine.
Page twenty-nine? Martin, can you help? Can you, do you know which, which bit? I'm trying to find out which bit.
Yeah, sorry, I'm, I was hand three and there were one and two in front of me, but certainly, you, you're correct councillor Todd, that the, the money to deliver on that retrofit programme is devolve, devolution money, so it's a devolution retrofit, so there's an income to match with the, the expenditure. We fully expect to spend all of it on exactly what it's been provided for. We've lined up the properties.
Yeah.
And we've agreed with the tenants what we're gonna do. We've got a contract in place now to deliver that. So it, it, to be frank, a really exciting project and hopefully will make a huge difference to those affected.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Gole's next.
Hi, yeah, so on, on page thirty-three, we've got one of the most significant high-level procurement activities is Glossop Markets and Creative Business Space Operator Concession. Now, I, I understand that this is running behind schedule and that there are further costs involving the, the fire safety of that building. Could, could you talk us through what the delays are going to be? Is this going to get pushed into twenty-five, twenty-six?
I think this is a part two issue.
Can you explain why it's a part two issue? Could you explain why it's a part two issue?
Because it's, it's financially sensitive to the, A, the council and B, to anybody, anybody that we're, we're dealing with. Unless Martin wants to.
I mean, it's certainly embarrassing, but I, I mean, this is why so the scrutiny committees exist, isn't it? To, to, to delve into some of the things that go wrong.
Part two comes once the, the press and the public have left. It's still the same meeting. You do get a right to scrutinise, absolutely.
Okay, and, and the, 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 the other part that I wanted to ask was-
Sorry, Martin.
So you, you-
Sorry councillor Gole, just to say that if you, if you're happy to hang on until we're in part two on that, we can cover all of those questions. To be fair, I think your question does cover a range of things that we could talk about in public versus those that would be better served in part two, but I think for the purposes of keeping the conversation in one place, probably best all goes in part two.
What can you talk about that would be available to people who live in Glossop?
Well, let's, let's have that conversation in part two and then we can determine what, what we might re- release afterwards.
So the, the other question that I had was that you, you, you said that you were doing everything you could to, through the procurement process to, to help local businesses, including lots of advice on, on the website. Now, I've just been on to the website and there's only one, one tender opportunity, which is a Melander feasibility study. Am I missing something or is there very little that people can, can bid for?
Yeah, if you get, if you get the chance to delve around, you'll find the full list of all of the, all of the procurements that have been done. And to be back on, but equally, those that are coming up changes from time to time, depending on what, where we are in the cycle, what it is that we're buying, but we're very keen to ensure that we're fully transparent on what we're buying and that local businesses have the opportunity to tender to get work with us.
So, so at the moment, there's just one opportunity for local businesses to tender and it's, it's a Melander feasibility study?
That's what, that's, if that's what the website's saying, then that, that's where we're at.
Okay, it doesn't seem like a huge bundle of opportunities for local businesses.
It, that's any business. It's, we're not just advertising those that we think would attract local businesses. We advertise all contracts on there, so it's just a function of the point of, of the year that we're in. If you keep your eye on that, you'll see that that ebbs and flows as we go through the year, so, and that's, that's available for all businesses local and otherwise, we don't, we don't prejudge when we put it out, whether or not it would suit a local business or whether there's one available, but we make sure that we put it out and that we hope to attract local businesses who think they've got the credentials and ability to deliver what we need and we'd be very we're always keen to make sure that we maximise that where we can.
Thank you, Martin, for your answers. Just to, to be clear, I, there, there is a question that's going into full council in October. Does this mean that even then that any questions about Glossop Market Halls will be answered in part two rather than publicly available to people who live in Glossop?
It depends on the question. I think one of the, one of the things we're concerned to ensure is that there's a there's a commercial contract aspect to it that we're organising and resolving. And it wouldn't be fair to release any commercial in confidence details. But equally councillor Gole, it's also important that we share what we can with the people locally in terms of what's happening within the project and we'll make sure that we, we can provide what we can without breaching any of those commercial in confidence discussions and aspects.
And can I just ask a question? Am I correct in thinking that the rules that exist about what can be discussed and what can't be discussed within council committee meetings are the same for every council across the, across England?
Yes.
It's nothing specific to High Peak Borough Council?
No, you're right, Chair.
Thank you for that confirmation. Councillor Collins?
Yes, I've got a couple on page thirty-five, a couple of questions. Um, there's a report, a very brief report on Alliance, on AES, but nothing on on Alliance North. I, I don't know if that's because the way the contracts work are different or what, but that's what I'd like to know, why there isn't an equivalent from Alliance North. And I've got another question on that.
Well, that is something Martin will, I don't know, I don't think I answered that.
I'll, I'll just have to go back to our procurement team that put this report together as to why we've only got one and not and not the other. They are configured slightly differently, but that's not to say that we couldn't produce that information. I don't know the reason why we can't. I see Rob's appeared, he might, he might have the answer.
Ah, it's Rob, Robert. You're on mute, Rob. Rob, you're on mute.
Robert? You got your hand up? You might be on mute.
Oh.
No, he is on mute, definitely.
Well, he's taking his hand down.
Oh, okay.
Speaking well. I've got another question on that actually, if I may. Um, which is, I mean, I know that this is something about the way accounts or financial reports are presented, but it is a bit of a problem that half million pounds of contract is actually quite a lot. And I realise this might be made up of lots of small contracts which are below a certain level of reporting. But it's still a bit worrying if there aren't contracts at all. If that's what this means, this is at the bottom of page thirty-five.
Yeah. Rob, are you able to answer that one? Have you managed to? Oh no, having mic problems.
He's having some mic problems. I thi- I think your question, Joanna, is what's in that basket of money?
Yeah, we, I'd have to come back to you on that, to be honest. I, I can't answer that from, from that information.
Yeah, it's just, why is there such a lot of it which is off contract?
Yeah, some of it is, is in relation to what we were talking about before, where we've got overspends and things that we happen to do extra over and above, so we have to, we have to buy that in addition to, but we'll get a more satisfactory answer to you, councillor.
Oh, I see what you mean. So it might be, but surely that would be an extension to a contract.
Yeah, we'll, 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 we'll get that definition clarified for you.
Thank you.
So, and I definitely, I certainly hope Rob's might work soon. He's got a presentation to do in very short.
I was thinking that, wasn't I?
There's also, um-
But hang on, hang on, Joanna, just before we move on, Rachel, can you record that as an action for the agenda of the next meeting so that it's on the next meeting? And that we just cover that item?
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. Sorry, Joanna.
Um, also, as I live in S thirty-three, I have to remind people that that is a postcode in High Peak. And also there are a lot of, as you know, in the Hope Valley, there are people who work from home and might have technical skills that, um, um, High Peak needs, so it'd be nice to know about that.
I, I think the challenge there, Joanna, is that if you look at the company I used to work for, they're a big national company. But there are many people who live in the High Peak who work for that company. And I, I guess the challenge of trying to then just go, well, you know, how does that all break down for people who work in the High Peak just starts to get incredibly messy?
But S thirty-three isn't mentioned, or?
No, I think Martin, I think Martin mentioned earlier that it does cover all the postcodes, but not specifically that one.
Okay.
I think that was right, Martin?
Yeah, so the, so the procurement team do try to cross-check the, the full postcodes that fit within the High Peak boundary to make sure that we when we report on local suppliers, that we're reporting accurately.
Okay.
There's just, a thought occurred to me in relation to not just what we were talking about just now, but also the upcoming cycle for the, for the corporate select. And that is there's some significant changes coming through for procurement and I wondered whether it might not be a prudent thing to do to have a presentation from, somebody from our procurement team on what those changes are, what they mean. And also, there also to be able to answer some of these questions that you've got here, so I think that might be something to consider and put forward as a future agenda item. Would it be beneficial?
I, I think there would, Martin. I think that that new procurement process is referenced somewhere in the papers of this meeting, because I read it. But yeah, I think it's, I think it's worthwhile.
It's been mentioned actually in, in quite a few, and it's certainly mentioned in the accounts.
Yeah. Okay, so, so both, both things, one being the, where does that particular basket of money that Joanna was talking about, what is it? And secondly, what are we gonna have to be doing in terms of procurement in the future? Councillor Quinn, and then we'll move on to customer feedback.
I, I'm just coming over all, Emily Thrain. Um, page thirty-four, the Royal Ascend going up, we, we might need to look at the typos.
Thirty-four?
I, I know that Emily-
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I know that Emily, I know that Emily sometimes listens to these meetings, so hopefully she's got a right smile on her face. Thanks, councillor Quinn.
So what is that?
It's at three point four, it should be ascent with two S's instead of the ascent, as in S and a C there, so excellent spot there.
Oh, well, she is a teacher, of course.
Okay. Um, are we okay now to then move on to customer feedback? Is that you again, Alan?
Me or Tanya?
Tanya, do you want to?
This is Tanya's team puts it together.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I've just lost my document now, bear with me one moment. Um, what you have in front of you is the first quarter performance feedback, so this is, this report covers the whole of the performance framework as well as the customer feedback, so um, the first part of the report as of the end of June, so it is the first quarter, so it is early days in the reporting year. We're on track fifty-six percent with forty-two percent being off track. The one thing I would like to highlight as part of this is, you'll remember from Andrew's previous presentation regarding the priority outcomes and the KPIs. We have significantly reduced the number of KPIs that form part of this report. So therefore, one off-track PPI makes quite a, a much bigger difference than it did before. So that's something that we are working with the management team to keep an eye on. Um, and then obviously, the, the main thing is, is to report back to you every quarter where we're up to. The reports have changed slightly. Um, so we've changed the format slightly, but you can hopefully get all the information you need from there. So we have the full performance reports there along with identifying the areas where we're actually off-target so that we can focus on, on what we need to do with those. Um, and then I suppose it's just open, open to any questions or any feedback about how we've presented. And then I suppose it's just open to any questions or any feedback about how we've presented the reports to you. So that's the performance side. And then obviously, at the end of the report, we have the customer feedback. So in there, we're sort of reporting on the the three service areas with the highest number of complaints. So you can see what's happening there. And then we go on to report where we are responding to complaints and any ombudsman decisions. And then obviously, there's an overview there of compliments and comments that are fed back to the council as well. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, are there any questions for Tanya? I've got a question, there's nobody to put their hand up yet. So when I was looking at the housing benefits response rate, Tanya, and actually, the report's well laid out, I can understand what it was talking about. Is the inability to meet the target associated in any way with staffing levels or capacity? And the reason I ask that is, when I look at the corporate peer action plan that's going to come along in a minute, there's an awful lot of things to do. And I sometimes wonder whether or not there's so many things that are prioritising them or making sure there's enough resource, that it's not stretched too thin, that you actually start to create problems in the KPI space?
No, the actions that we've got coming up as part of the peer review, part of that is resourcing what we're doing going forward, but that's mainly for the bigger tasks. As far as the housing benefit processing times, the team is fully staffed. We don't have any.
Do you want me to help you out on this one, Tanya?
You can do, Martin, because it's under your area of responsibility, so.
No, thank you. You're right to say that we are fully staffed. We've had a few aspects of sickness within the team, and we have had to bolster it with some additional external support. But the issues in relation to the benefits times relate to some statistical issues with data points. So when a new claim comes in, it gets a date set on it and then we have time to turn it around. And what's happened, we've had a few that have come through where it's been a change in circumstances, where the system's gone to the start point of when they originally applied, as opposed to giving a start point date from when the change of circumstances came in. So we've got some statistical anomalies in there. So we're reporting that to you as we find it in the system here. But you're right to note that it does nevertheless then present an issue where it looks like we're taking a long time. The other thing is that we work closely with the D W P and all of this, and they have data and statistics. So we can tie these statistics that you've got back to the D W P, but we're working with them and our system providers to make sure that where we have those circumstances, where it's a change in circumstances, that the date starts on the circumstance changing, not from when the original application came in. So if you like, there's an anomaly in the way that that's working and reporting for us, but we've not corrected it. We've shown you exactly how we've got it. So when we get to the bottom of that, you should see an improvement as we go forward.
Can I also say that in part of my meetings with Martin and Joe at my last meeting, that target was seven days, but the actual result was six days. So there's a significant difference there. And this is given to me every, and obviously, we're now, this is last month, so this is August. So this result here is June. So if you like, I have a more up-to-date result that I note. And the officers know that I diligently write all these figures that they give me. But certainly, sorry, not August, September that one was. And that was this month because I had a meeting with her last week. Martin was, so that's six percent now. So if you like, it's an erroneous, sorry, six days, yeah.
It's good to understand it though, Alan, so thanks for that.
Oh, no, 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 it's true. But Martin is correct, because that's exactly what I got told. But Joe and the team do work very, very closely with D W P. And normally, the D W P do, in fact, I am told by John Wildon, that they normally take these strange, spurious things that are obviously wrong out. But for some unknown reason, for this particular tranche, they didn't. She's investigating why.
Thanks, Alan. Councillor Sidle?
I think Cath was before me, but I think that's a pretty good time turnaround that for housing benefit. I mean, where I work, it's about ten working days as a standard turnaround. And sometimes other councils are even worse. So I think that is pretty commendable. Even though it's seven days, I think it is a good, really good achievement to get it done in within ten working days. So don't knock it.
Yeah, thank you for that context, Councillor Sidle. We always try to do better, of course. You know, it's important for those people who make their claims that they get these turned around as quickly as we can. So we like to be leading as opposed to lagging on these, for sure.
But even then, seven days, seven or eight days to turn it around, if it's a housing association, we're paying four weeks in arrears. So you'll be waiting for, even if you did it today and they just missed the payment run, they'd be getting the payment in four weeks' time anyway. So it swings around abouts. I mean, most rent accounts, we pay a week in advance for that, but most of them are two to four weeks behind. So that's the way it works. So I think it's a pretty good target, to be fair. And I think the team should commend it, even though it's a bit over.
Thanks, Councillor Sidle. Councillor Sidle, sorry if I got things in the wrong order, Cath.
It doesn't matter. Right, okay. Is there any way we can turn the voids round quicker? Because at the moment, it's taken about six weeks with the pressures on housing. I just wondered if that could be done quicker.
Yeah, it's something we're looking at regularly. There's a degree that clearly we want to turn a void around for the beneficiaries, the new incoming tenants within a day. But equally, there's a point that we have to make sure that they're moving into a property that is at the standard we want it to be. So there will always be a lag. And we are looking at what those standards are and working with Alliance North to make sure that we are as quick as we can be from when somebody leaves to when they then relet it and get it sent out. And one of the things we do to help with that is looking a bit further back in the process from when they initiate the notice to make sure we line up the work and get it all done so that we can almost pile in as they're walking out the door, they're working, piling in through the door as soon as they've gone. So that's important. It's really important, clearly, for the people concerned who are coming into the property. It's also important for our income profile that we get the rents as soon as we can as well. So there's benefit all round to us to improve in that. Again, I look at benchmarks on that, and we benchmark exceptionally well compared to a lot. But equally, we don't want to sit on our hands and think, pat ourselves on the back even, and say that we've done as much as we need to. We still want to get better.
Okay, another question is, have we any idea why fly tipping has gone up so much? It's gone up from eighteen last year in quarter one to hundred and twelve this quarter.
Can't say specifically why in the High Peak, but I look around at our neighbours and my colleagues in other areas, and it seems a bigger and growing problem. And it's perhaps a function of the challenges around the cost of living, the cost of disposing of waste, et cetera, that people feel that disposing of it illegally is the way that they want to tackle it. But I can't give you an absolute answer on that myself. Whether colleagues may be able to, I'll certainly look into that. Rachel, if you'll record that, we can see if we can get a better answer on that.
I mean, it's always a puzzle to me, because I think we've got really good waste disposal centres in the High Peak. You know, we've not got as stricter rules as some of the other people. So anyway, that was that. The last point on this, I'd like to, I noticed we've got fifty-two invoices outstanding.
Can I ask where you're looking at that, please? Just my reference.
It was, oh, hmm. Is it page fifty-two? Sorry, I might have mixed the number up with the page. One fifty-two, there's quite a lot of invoices outstanding.
Hundred nineteen.
Yeah.
Yeah, and now there are a hundred and sixty-four. Just need to check what that KPI is in relation to. Right, so that's our collection of debt. So that's the number of invoices that we collect, but we also measure the value of those invoices. So what that looks to me is that the value's not that high. So we've actually got quite a long tail of relatively small invoices. And the overall collection of debt is, I have to say, phenomenal, really. The team do a fantastic job to keep that down to that level in value. But at times, when we've got a lot of small value ones, it will mean that we'll be reporting like we were this month, that there are a hundred and sixty-four outstanding.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, may I have good news? An upcoming agenda rights and chair.
Okay, I'm going to take two more before I move on. So councillor Collins?
Yeah, just briefly, I was going to ask the same thing as Cath. But also, I do agree with Ed Sidle that, you know, the housing benefit is processed so much more quickly than most benefits, that I think the team's doing really well.
Good.
Thanks, Joanna. I only asked because it was in the report. I think it's great as well. Councillor Quinn?
Yeah, sorry, just bear with me while I try and log back in and have a look. Right, okay. Yeah, the housing benefit, good. However, there are a few things. In terms of, on page forty-two of this, the sports facilities, helping people to improve health, I'd like us to have a focus on how many people that is going to impact. Because we'll go back, because we do look at this when we look at it in community select. And I don't think leisure centres are having enough impact on enough people across the High Peak if we look at the numbers using them. And then going on to the housing, the good quality homes, there are a few things in here that I find concerning, and I would like us to follow up if possible in terms of the areas for improvement. I'll leave aside the temporary accommodation, et cetera. But the percentage of homes meeting the decent home standard is off track. I find that really concerning. I think that should be a priority. It is absolutely important. The cost of housing repairs exceeded target, programme of fire door replacements not yet commenced. I find that really concerning as well. And I would like to keep a track of the progress that we're making on that. Am I right? This is something that we work with Alliance North with. And considering the part two item, that's making me feel quite concerned about further working with them in that area. So that is, it is a concern. Those were the points that I wanted to make, but I'd like to see us follow them up. Because decent homes are fundamental, and I just think this isn't good enough.
Thanks, Rachel. So Martin?
Yeah, I can't answer the one about the leisure and the use of the leisure centres. So I'll look to others to come back on that. Councillor Quinn, just in relation to the housing ones, what I would draw attention to are several things. And in particular, there's the recent regulator of social housing's inspection on us that got us a grade C two, which is a fantastic outcome for us and testimony to all of the hard work that goes in on a daily basis to making sure that we get the best service that we can and the properties are up to the standard that they should be for our tenants. The other thing I wanted to say is that the decent homes standard dropping is largely a function of the fact that we don't, or haven't been doing until this year, a regular stock condition survey. So we've got, as a professional out now, going around the properties, we've commissioned an initial twenty percent survey. So the more data we get, the better we'll be, the more accurate we will be. And that decent homes percentage does change. And if you look at the Lars data, which is the government published data on all housing providers, it does change significantly year on year, especially when you undertake a year where you're doing a stock condition survey. Just to add to that, we feel that to really get ourselves in an even better position.
Is now exiting.
Oh, dear.
Keep going, keep going.
Yeah, we've commissioned another twenty percent. So we've got a forty percent review of our stock to get the real detail, professional information on the detail and standard of the stock. And what that will do for us is when we get the full detail through, and it's not fully complete yet, but we will then put together our forward programme of works, the capital works, and the financing and funding to make that work for us. Just as a headline for you, and I hope everybody's sitting down at the moment, but the initial feedback from the stock condition surveys, and this is over thirty years, I'll just put that caveat around there, is the cost of the works at the standards we want is three hundred and seventy million. That's three seven zero million for us over thirty years. So we've got a real challenge to make sure that we keep the stock at the standard we want, and even better than that actually, in many regards. And then the final thing to say about that as well is, of course, the housing board. And the housing board gets a much bigger suite of key performance indicators on all of our housing metrics. It's something we brought to the board last week. It's emerging, the board itself's only met three, four times. So it's still in its early days. And there's a lot of scrutiny there on their housing stock and the delivery of our housing services. So that was covering off those points. And then the fire doors replacement, we undertook a survey, a professional assessment of our fire doors. What has happened is that since the last time they were inspected, the standards have changed. So it's not that we've got poor doors, the standards have gone beyond what it was when they were installed and last inspected. So we had a very high failure rate. And so what, and the failure rate meant that we have to identify a significant sum of money to remedy that. And for those of you around a budget setting time, you'll know that we went to borrow the money for our housing revenue account to address the shortfall in the fire doors. The text in the report says that whilst it's not yet commenced, it's still on schedule. We've got an agreement with Derbyshire Fire and Rescue Service of the profile and programme of replacing those doors. So we're making sure that we'll deliver within that profile. So please don't be too perturbed by what it says in the text in there. There's more going on. There's, as you can imagine, this is in the millions, these fire doors. So it's quite a big programme. It means there's a procurement that has taken place. And then once that's done, then we get the people in doing the work. So it's in hand and on track and indeed scrutinised by the fire and rescue service. So I've given quite a lot there, so I hope I've answered.
I think that covered everything.
Yes, thank you.
And I think, Rachel, you'll have to pick the other one about leisure up at the.
I was just going to say that. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you, Martin.
I think that answered everything, Tanya, didn't it? So you didn't need to come in. Brilliant, okay. So moving on, the next item on the agenda, oh, sorry, one of the actions was that we note the report and duly noted. So the next item on the agenda is the corporate peer action plan. And I'm not sure who's presenting here. Is it back to you, Alan? Or is it Anthony?
Yeah, I think it's Anthony, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it's Anthony.
Okay, it's mostly me on this. As members be aware, we had the corporate peer challenge earlier this year. We're expecting them back again in November, unless there's been unchanged to that. So they'll do sort of a less intense but a more focused review on the areas that they raised for us. The link that's with the agenda gives you a link to the action plan and the actions that have been completed on that. Essentially, it's presented as an update for members. Happy for any questions that members want to ask or any bits that they want to highlight?
Whilst we wait for questions, then Anthony, my concern when I read it, it's a big, long list of things to do, you know, some of them are nice to do, others are. things to do, you know, some of them are nice to do, others are. I'd like to see when they come back and do their revisit, to actually rank things in importance. It's a bit like if I go in to do consultancy somewhere, I will give people a big, long list of things that they could do. But they expect me to say which ones are going to actually give me the best return. And I've still got this worry going around in my head, Anthony, that everybody's busy and there's lots to do. And the problem sometimes is consultants, which effectively this is, it's peer review consultancy, can give you a list of everything that they see. And I just like them, when they come back to say, if I had to rank this, this is how I'd rank it. And if we lived in an eighty twenty world where 20% of what you do normally returns you 80% of, you know, 20% of your effort returns you 80% of the goodness. You know, what would they do if they couldn't do half of it? What's the half they wouldn't do? Or is it all important? And I can't really get to that. And it is, it's a genuine concern that, you know, the more we press on efficiency, the more we, you know, reduce headcount. And we heard today that the government, or it was the previous government, that these rules for procurement have come from. Just mean more effort. It means more effort for somebody. And that just worries me. I'd like to see it ranked. I don't know what your view is, Anthony. I know Tanya's got a hand.
It's a bit of a twofold process in a sense. I mean, a number of the actions that have been flagged up in the corporate peer challenge are already things that we were looking at anyway, in some cases. So there is already some existing work ongoing. In some, for some parts of the actions, we've already identified that we need additional support to be able to do that. So for example, the elements that are mentioned around sort of the review of the alliance. Yeah, we've already engaged or we're in the process of engaging at the moment, local partnerships, which is sort of, again, a local government sort of friendly or family sort of company that will come in and do that review for us based on the issues that we've identified from both the CPC review and a couple of the other reviews. There's other actions, say, for example, so one of them was around getting some external verification on our housing service. And, you know, to a certain extent, as luck would have it, we have already been able to do that by having the housing regulator come in and sort of do that for us at little or no cost. So there is some elements of that that have been going along. In addition, for the first time in quite a few, quite a few years, we've been able to sort of both fill vacancies but also get the message through to sort of the various heads of service that if they've got a business case that sort of identifies a need for additional staffing and we can match that up with the financial case, then we will take on additional, we will take on additional staffing to sort of do that. And, you know, quite a few teams across the council have been able to sort of benefit from that. Now, that, to a certain extent, that also comes with a little bit of a disadvantage in a way because having those additional staff means that everyone's got to be trained up and got to the same space. So in some teams, that's a particular challenge. We also have a little bit of a sort of, you know, sometimes sort of a best of, it can be a good thing but a bad thing as well. So customer services, for example, for some of the sort of the more entry level type jobs. We do quite, it does quite often mean that particularly in recent times, we have lost quite a few of our customer services people who've gone on to take new, new opportunities within the councils. So it's a bit of a swings and roundabout thing, but we are trying to make sure that we've got the staffing to do that. I think there is some, yeah, I think to a certain extent, as part of the peer review and some of the other inspections that we have as a council. I think where there are those concerns, where they're worried about, you know, things could potentially fall apart or things could potentially go bad if those areas aren't sort of addressed, they will sort of flag them up in that type of priority way. I think the fact that sort of to a certain extent that we've got, that we've not got a solid priority list from this is because to a certain extent, there is no, there's nothing necessarily been identified that's of that nature. Yeah. So we will take on the board, sort of the opportunity to ask the peers when they come back. You know, from what's left, is there sort of particular things, you know, they prefer us to sort of focus on that on a particular timeline. And I suspect they will interview a number of councils again in the same way as they did in the first round. So again, sort of members will also get their opportunities to sort of feedback, feedback that into them. But it is an interesting one because, yeah, they send, you know, for most of the peer reviews that have been done elsewhere across the country as well. It is generally sort of, you just get the list of, here's what we think you need to be working on. But quite often it's not necessarily prioritised unless, as I said, sort of there's those areas identified where, you know, if you don't have a look at that, it could well cause a problem. You know, if not necessarily immediately, but fairly soon. Yeah. So we're on track with them all. It's, I think in some cases, it's we have been bringing in additional resources to make sure that we can get through them. But it just takes a little while to sort of get those in place and get everything on track. But the timelines and dates that are within the action plan are more or less accurate in terms of what we're doing.
Okay, thanks, Anthony. And Tanya, you could hand up.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to that really. I think in essence, there were only eight recommendations. So seven which were alliance wide recommendations and one each, one for High Peak and one for Staffordshire Morlands. The action plan as it is, it's, some of it is work that we were already in progress with, following the original peer review. And some of the dates on it are set for quite some time in the future. So the idea is, is this is sort of pulled everything together that we were working on anyway. And it gives us an opportunity just to monitor it. But, you know, as far as the priorities, then that's certainly something we can raise when they come back. It's the fifth of November that they're due to come back to review where we're up to. And we do have a group that will meet regularly between now and then, just to monitor progress and where we're up to. And that may be a consideration for that group too.
Okay, thanks.
And there's no implication of gunpowder plot or anything like that with them coming back on the fifth of November.
Thanks, Anthony. It's a genuine concern because we do try and run things very lean. And I do worry that, you know, when you try and add more things in, a lot of the time, or sometimes, things can fall off the other end of the conveyor belt. And you don't necessarily know they've fallen off until a little while later. But I, nobody else put their hand up on that. So I think we can move on from the corporate peer action plan. And the next item on the agenda is the efficiency programme update.
Thank you, Chair. Hopefully you can all hear me okay.
We can. Thanks.
Yeah, apologies for the technical issues before. I've had to switch over to my mobile phone device now because my laptop wasn't working correctly. It wouldn't let me access the mic. So glad you can all hear me. Thanks for bearing with me on that. So, yeah, the update this time around is mainly focused on Alliance Environmental Services. I did hear the question about Alliance North, but wasn't able to come back because of the mic problem. But I think what we'll look at doing is bring forward an update on Alliance North at a later point in time. I think the company itself is a lot newer than AES and it's been on a journey over recent months, you know, to prioritise and focus on the things that it's really had to. There's a number of things in train, particularly around commercial trading that Alliance North is working on. So if it's okay with you, Chair, we'll bring a further update back around that in the future.
That's fine.
Okay, so the focus for this evening's discussion then is around AES. And because I'm on my phone, I can't share the slides, but I know you've all had those slides already in the agenda pack. So just looking at slide three, you can see on there that the target for council companies is 28K in this current financial year. And the focus around that is through AES rather than Alliance North. So those things I've referred to that we'll bring back in the future aren't included in this particular number. Moving through into the next slide then, so the approach to develop the efficiency programme with AES has been something that we've done. We've been working on over the last few months. So the objective is set out there. I think it's considered one, given the fact that AES deliver all of their services are customer facing, they're all facing residents. So the balance around deciding what should be in an efficiency programme is got to be done carefully to try and balance the needs of the residents and obviously really discuss carefully the impact, if any, on service standards. So that's something that we've been doing over the last couple of months. That started initially with a scope and exercise with AES colleagues, the board and the senior management team to give AES the opportunity in that context to put forward what they thought would be appropriate efficiency savings to consider. We took that list forward with a dedicated workshop with the AES Commissioning Board. So that includes the relevant portfolio holders to discuss that in a lot more detail and weigh up what should and shouldn't be in. We've then subsequently agreed that, which is the amount that's carried forward into this year, which we've just, we've just looked at. And then we're going through a process with AES through all of our regular meetings and commissioning board arrangements is to review the progress made against the plan and support them to deliver those priorities. So as you can see, the target for this year is a fairly small target. That's set in context with the fact that we've got some really big issues to look at around waste collection moving forward. And we're starting that work with the joint member working group in October to really start to get under the skin of the waste reforms and what that, what the impact of that is. Because that is going to be fairly widespread and it's going to impact on lots of different areas of the AES Waste Collection Service operation. And often that would be, they would be interrelated issues that we've got to consider before we could bring anything forward with that in that sense. So this is, this is a fairly simple one for this year. It's around procurement of pavement sweepers and a review of how they're deployed to generate some efficiencies. Reduce the purchase of them from four that was originally in the plan to three. And then the reason why we can bring that forward is because the way that they can be deployed operationally doesn't reduce service standards. And we agreed that that would be done on a trial basis. So that would be monitored on an ongoing basis around service standards. And if it's found to not be working, then we would look to go back to the previous arrangement of looking to procure the one extra pavement sweeper and then find efficiencies elsewhere. So that was from the main chunk of the contribution. And then secondly was the introduction of organic waste collections with a target of 5K to make up the total target of 28 grand. So where we are with both of those two elements then, we've completed the procurement process for the pavement sweepers. It was slightly delayed. So that was delayed from July until August. So we're just finishing the back end of that procurement exercise. And then the service standards will change and we will be able to develop some efficiencies. But obviously it's going to be condensed to a reduced number of months. So the calculation exactly on that is something that's happening now due to the delay. So we'll be able to update on that in the future. The second part of it is the organic waste collections. Unfortunately, haven't had an uptake in the numbers of companies that have got on board with that service. So AES, we've asked them to review how they've gone about trying to recruit and sell that service to the, to the, to companies locally. And they're going to be putting in a more concerted effort around the marketing and promotion of that service across the course of the next six months to hopefully hit that target before the end of the financial year. In terms of the next steps, touched on some of them already, but obviously the plan is to continue to look for operational efficiencies where we can and continue to work through the commissioning board and our regular contact with AES to do that. The process around the waste reforms is going to be really important, as I've mentioned before, and we're already starting that. So we should know towards the end of October, what the impact on operational side of the service is going to be. And then whether that then creates the opportunity, I suppose, for some efficiencies to be gained and added to the programme. The commissioning board really is there to try to continue the scrutiny over AES and support them to deliver some of the efficiencies that are identified for subsequent years. For Alliance North, as I mentioned, the plan is to continue to work with them to develop the trading services and bring a further update back on those at a future meeting. And again, provide other updates in the future around the AES efficiency programme items. And then moving forward and just taking a forward look into next financial year, those three items at the bottom of the slide, bulky waste, collection, service, the organic waste collection, building on what we've just said. And then the ongoing savings around sweepers are going to form the basis for the efficiency programme for next financial year. So that comes to the end of the summary for AES. Happy to answer any questions.
Just in the absence of any other questions, is there any opportunity to go back through the LGA questioning the strategy around some of the new waste collection legislation? We've spoken about it here before and I see in Scotland where people try to collect food waste in a different way. You just end up with these small bins strewn across the streets of Edinburgh every time there's a high wind. It just feels like the whole thing hasn't been thought through and it's just adding cost to local authorities.
We haven't been made aware of a formal process that we could follow around that. There were some authorities where they could challenge the validity of collecting in the way that they're proposed. But unfortunately, we weren't one of those that could do that. So I think unless anything does get released, what we've done is commissioned the modelling via AES to understand what the collection arrangements need to be based on those requirements that the legislation sets out. And once we receive the modelling back, that will present a series of options for us to consider. And that will include different rounds, different bin sizes, different vehicles that may be able to be used to collect the waste that we've got to. And I think at that point, we'll have a better view on what actually could be the end, the end point of delivery in terms of the vehicles and the bins. So I think it's a little bit early for us to sort of know and predict what we're going to end up with. But in a couple of months' time, we'll know a lot more. And through that waste joint member working group, we'll be able to discuss and scrutinise what the pros and cons of all of those things are. Obviously, at the same time, we'll keep our eye and through our networks that we have, we'll look at opportunities, if there is one, to question some of the methodology or the approach. But really conscious that we've got to implement this by April 26th, particularly around the food waste. So we can't delay and take our eye off the ball. We've got to continue as we're proposing to complete the modelling and then start to put down some significant plans. Because things like vehicle procurement, sleep times for those items, the bins as well, they're all things that we've got to make sure that we're in the queue for. So we can't delay those, those things. And so hopefully that sort of is your feel for where we're at, councillor.
Yeah, it does. One of the worries I constantly have is that people in the High Peak don't see decision making as being either Labour, Green, Conservative, Lib Dem. They see it in terms of High Peak Borough Council just being this big corporate behemoth. And when these changes happen and the attendant costs that go with them, I know I'll just see a load of social media activity basically saying High Peak Borough Council has lost its mind. Now, we all know here on this, on this meeting, what's behind some of this. So I think equally, we need to be conscious of what these decisions are and what they're going to cost, but also communicating where they actually came from. And what's actually happening is High Peak Borough Council, AES are implementing a national strategy that is going to change everything for everybody, as well as costing more.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, communication's got to be central to this from the public perspective, hasn't it? And, you know, we're really conscious around those messages that have got to be started to be given to take people on the journey ahead of the change. So they understand why. And then also when the collection arrangements have been agreed and we know where we stand, making sure that people know exactly what is going to happen and how they engage with that, I think is really important. The food waste collection element is a new element. We don't do that. There's other councils that do do it, that have learned from the process, some that are quite local to us. So I think, you know, there's learning that we can pick up around comms to make sure that we get that message right. So that's something very much we're going to focus on in the member working group. We'll be able to review all of that and input into it as we go forward with the, that group starting in October.
And just so there's a nice circularity to it, Robert, I didn't know that AES were trying to increase their commercial organic waste collection. So one of the things they might want to do is just recirculate that to. So one of the things they might want to do is just recirculate that to members, because I, I'd certainly share it out there in the community.
I'll certainly take that away and we'll get some information out to everybody.
Okay. Well, whilst I was rambling, there were no other hands up. So I think everybody's fairly comfortable. Yeah. So thanks, Robert. Good job.
Thanks very much.
Okay. And next item on the agenda, as I just asked Martin to just give a quick update on AI, because you will remember a couple of meetings ago, I mentioned that Martin was looking at AI and just thought that would just be worth a quick update on sort of what opportunities there were for the council.
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. And I'll be pretty quick on this. You've already had a, a bumper bundle and lots of rich discussion, plenty of questions. So yes, it's true to say, well, clearly artificial intelligence is already affecting our lives and will affect them even more. The, the purpose of what I'm looking at, and to be fair, Tanya, is as well, is what opportunities are there for us to utilise artificial intelligence? And looking around at what's happening in local government land, and you look at where the benefits of artificial intelligence have landed so far. Then they're in the county councils and those councils with responsibility mainly for social services, really high volume transactions. So I had an initial discussion with one of the system providers for artificial intelligence. And my perspective was that we probably don't yet have the transaction volume that would give us the benefit if we were to put an investment into artificial intelligence. Thankfully for me, that, that their view is the same, that the, the entry cost for it will drop as more people get, get into artificial intelligence. And then the return on investment ultimately will get shorter for, for those who enter with a lower volume of transactions. So I, I'm waiting on a formal proposal from them, but those, those are, to be frank, the, the headlines. So I don't expect there's a viable proposal coming forward. But you never know what, what I might see. And if there is anything further that's really interesting for us to take forward, then I will bring it here. And the other, I did mention that Tanya is also working on this agenda and liaising with our IT services provider NEC, as well as we talked before about the, the, the IT procurements that we're doing. And of course, we have an eye on what artificial intelligence might do in the background for, for some of those IT systems that we'll be procuring. But that was it by way of update. But I see there's a hand up already.
Thanks, Martin. councillor Sidle.
Yeah, I, I think at, at the moment, we'd probably be better invested in looking at our telephone system. So that can be multi-channel or omnichannel. So if we invested in a, a system like the one I, one like we use at work, like eight by eight or a similar one, which could send a text message to a customer, could be used for chatting to customers, could be used for giving, doing, delivering emails and things like that. I think that's where we'd be better off investing because we'd get more out of it at the moment than an AI function. But going forward, yes, there probably will be for capturing like web chats and things like that, or doing chatbots and things like that. Maybe useful for, for online chats. But I do think a new phone system is definitely what we need to look at to, to, to maximise the way we work and obviously eliminate some of the calls that we could potentially push online.
Thanks, Ed. I think, I think you're agreeing with Martin there. So thanks for that. And thanks, Martin. I just think that that just gives a completeness to the previous conversation we had. It's great.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay, next item on the agenda was any questions referred to the executive member? I don't think we have any.
None, Chair.
Thank you for that. So to result, so the next item on the agenda is to resolve that the press and public be excluded from the meeting during consideration of the following items of business, as there may be a disclosure of exempt information as defined in part one of Schedule 12A of the Local Government Act 1972. So Rachel, are you okay to stop the recording, please?